I love Craig. He looks like, you know, Craig looks like a bandit. Okay. I'm trying to get a comfortable mask. Yeah. All right. So we'll call the meeting to order six oh one. And, um, let's go ahead. Do we have any public comments on anything other than what is in? I haven't even seen that here.
Pledge of allegiance.
I, I don't have my glasses. That's why, because I can't, I, I have it right here. It's just that I can't see right now. Okay.
I can't hear you.
Oh, there, there we go. Okay, call to order. Who is on, who's on one today? Yvonne or?
This is Lori Frontella.
Lori, please. No, we don't.
Would you like to call?
Yes, please.
Mayor Cruz.
Present.
Vice Mayor Lance.
Present.
Councilmember Bagby.
Present.
Councilmember Paula.
Here.
And Councilmember Walter.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Are there any conflict of interest declarations by anybody on council? None? Okay. So at this moment, uh, do we have any agenda review? Uh, oh, yeah. Wait, let's do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right. Now we'll go to agenda review. Uh, changes or deletions? I understand we want to pull an item. Uh, Councilmember Walter?
Um, yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull item number D seven, which is the appointment of a alternate planning commissioner.
Thank you. Out. Other than that, anybody else?
Madam Mayor, the staff does not have any changes or, or deletions to the agenda this evening.
Okay, thank you. At this point, any public comments, any person wishing to speak to the city council on an item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on an item on the agenda at the time the item comes for consideration. Okay? Sir?
Good evening, Your Honor. I was here once before. And I'm a tenant in senior living. I don't know if you remember me, but.
Yes, David.
Yeah, David.
Yes. Askano.
We still have the smoking problem. And the owner and the manager will do nothing about it. Everybody's, uh, we now have ashtrays at the entrance ways with cigarette butts there all the time. So when we walk in, and it's not just me, there's quite a few of us that don't smoke, it's pretty nauseating. And some of the people that smoke come outside. They don't go 25 feet away. They go right outside the door. And, and that's where they smoke. At the back of the building where I live, it's about 15 feet to the fence. So you can't smoke back there anyway, but they do. And, um, Domus, the owner of the building, seems to think that this is a smoking facility. And with the code that the, the city council adopted, it says if, if smokers and non-smokers conflict, then the right to clean air shall be the top priority. That's not happening. And so I, I called the housing authority and they said to file police reports, which I went down and did a visit, a verbal police report. Nothing happened. I don't expect the police department to come out there every time somebody's smoking in the hallway. But the management is not, uh, they don't care. They, uh, the manager smokes, smokes in her office, smokes outside of her unit. Supposed to be 25 feet away. I don't know how they can do that. And it's, it's, uh, I need help from the members here.
Okay. David, thank you very much for this. This is an issue that has been, um, brought to us in the past and also at coffee with the mayor. I will make sure that the chief follows up on this and that, uh, the city manager follows up with you too. I understand that, uh, one of, of the people from Legal Aid was looking into this. I don't know what results have come about this, but we're definitely going to address this. So we will follow up with you, um, hopefully by next week.
Okay.
All right. He lives on Divine Apartments on Hillsburg Avenue.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you very much, David.
Thank you.
Nina, did you have comments?
I'm Nina Handchett. I'm speaking here as a, um, the director of the Cloverdale Chamber of Commerce, and I just wanted to thank you for your support individually and collectively for Friday's Winter Festival. It was, um, a really wonderful event. It was a lot of work. A lot of people volunteered, a lot of people from the city. We had a lot of support from city staff, the police department, the Parks and landscaping group, Public Works, and, um, everybody in between. I just wanted to say thank you for that and have it on record. And, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Nina. And this was Nina Handchett from the Chamber of Commerce. No, no, I'm just making sure that the, the clerk who's online takes note of that. All right.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a comment. Am I good?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to thank the chamber. It was an outstanding event. It was by far one of the best that I've seen. I mean, they've all been good, but this certainly exceeded the past ones. And so it was really well done and thank you so much and all those that volunteered to make it such a successful event. Thank you.
Yeah, I stopped by the chamber offices this, this afternoon and, and told Nina just the feedback that I had gotten. And it just was so incredibly positive. People were walking up to me in the plaza thanking me. And I said, don't thank me. Thank the chamber and all the volunteers who put this together. So it was really the, it was really an amazing example of how the community came together. It really brought us an event that, that we really needed. And, and honestly, the, the weather really cooperated with us too. That was, that was really great. It was neither freezing nor raining nor freezing and raining, which is always a plus. So we've had.
Or windy.
Really great, or windy. Yeah, we've had really great weather to enjoy some of our outdoor events. And I just want to thank Nina and her staff and, and everyone on the chamber board who, who just made it a wonderful event. I think it was just really important for the community to have a place to, to come out and start celebrating the holidays together. It was just very, very meaningful. And, um, got to go kind of before and after the, um, the employee appreciation holiday party as well. So it was a really fun night. And I just want to thank you again, Nina, for all of your hard work and, you know, spearheading a, a great event. I know you didn't do it by yourself, but it's your leadership and your example. So we really appreciate you and all you do.
Madam Mayor, I have nothing more to add. I just think, Nina, you know how I feel about the chamber and the job you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, before we go to proclamations and the remaining of the, uh, agenda, I would like for us to take a few seconds of silence to honor, um, the memory of Cristina Lepeduarte, who died recently, and also to think about the parents of all those children who died due to gun violence that has become a common event in this country. So please, um, a few seconds of silence, please. Thank you very much. At this point, we are going to go ahead and, um, read the proclamation presented to Craig Johnson for 30 years of service to the community of Cloverdale. Do you want to read that, David? Or should I ask one of our council members to do so?
Madam Mayor, I, it's, it's, it's the council's pleasure. I'm more than happy to read it if, if you'd like me to.
Melanie, may I ask you to do so?
Well, Craig, we're gonna just really embarrass you now, so get ready. Here we go. This is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale presented to Craig Johnson for 30 years of service. And he's only 29, so I don't know how that's happened. So he's, he served our community of Cloverdale, whereas Craig was hired as a full-time Public Works Utility employee on September 3rd, 1991. Which, this is the day after he finished kindergarten, apparently, and was promoted to Public Works Utility Worker Two on July 1st, 1999. And whereas prior to being a full-time employee, Craig worked multiple summers as a part-time seasonal employee from 1980 to 1991. And whereas Craig has served as acting crew leader several times for the Public Works Department, and whereas Craig has received several commendations from numerous residents for assisting an elderly couple with directions, assisting residents with flooding, water emergencies, street light repairs, and intern, internments. I'm not sure what that is, but I'm sure it was important. And whereas Craig has been described as providing excellent customer service and having a big heart, and which I do know what it is, and I witnessed it myself, he is willing to assist and go an extra mile. And whereas Craig has also received several commendations from local groups such as the Kiwanis for his assistance with the Vineyard Races, Sculpture Trail of four 10-plus years, assisting the Chamber of Commerce with their annual spring celebration, Cloverdale Heritage Days in 2008, assisting the Citrus Fair with traffic plan for the parade in 2009. And whereas Craig has also received recognition from city staff and city council for his assistance with constructing a new dais for the council meetings in 2009, and for his assistance with Police Department's Comprehensive Dispatch Center 911 Emergency Communication Transition in 2016. And whereas Craig Johnson is instrumental in ensuring the street lights and traffic signals in Cloverdale remain operational and function properly. And now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Cloverdale does hereby proclaim its appreciation to Craig Johnson for his numerous contributions to the City of Cloverdale and the Cloverdale Public Works Department during his 30-year tenure working with the City of Cloverdale. Be it further resolved that Mayor Marta Cruz of the City of Cloverdale, along with the city council members, do hereby acknowledge the dedication and significant contributions by Craig Johnson on behalf of the citizens of Cloverdale this day, December 8th, 2021.
And we must add that he gave light to Santa Claus at the Winter Fest. So Craig? Do we have a proclamation to give him? Or is this gonna be done at the, at the city hall? I know, I signed it.
We, we will do that at city hall. We'll provide an official signed proclamation for Mr. Johnson.
Well, thank you, Craig, for your service. And thank you, Sessa, for the patience.
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Paula.
Thank you. I, I just want to personally thank Craig as well. You know, I've had the privilege of working with him in several capacities over the years. And, uh, I'll never forget, uh, the one time we did the outdoor movie for probably maybe six or seven years. And we kept tweaking that because the lights were on and we had to turn a light off. Well, turn a light off isn't flipping a switch. You gotta get up on the pole and do the bulb. And Craig was always there. He, he got that working perfect. And, uh, the movie was a success for all those years. And, uh, it's always been such a pleasure. We have an excellent crew in our city hall and city, uh, Public Works Group and Light and Landscape. And Craig, you, you're one of them and you've been there the longest. So, uh, you know, you've been a great role model for the other employees that they're all there collaborating, working on it as a team. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Craig, I just want to take a minute and thank you for the work that you do with our Hometown Heroes program. The banners of the, uh, young folks that are in the military. You work along with Bob Cox to put them up and take them down and then rehang them in the vets' hall. And I really appreciate that. And, and, and you really do show, uh, leadership within your department. And, and I know when anything's broken, you're gonna be there to fix it. So, so thank you.
Funny thing is, I probably know Craig the longest since he was my baseball coach at about age 10. So, uh, it just shows how long we've been around in this town. And he's always been there to help everyone and it's very much appreciated. And I've called you my friend for a long time and I, I'm glad I have you still around.
Thank you, Scott. I worked with your dad when he worked with us.
Nobody believes he did. It was so long ago. Back when he had hair.
You must have been a newborn, right?
He was very little.
Well, thank you very much. Chief, did you want to add anything?
Well, I'd be happy to. No, it's been great, Craig. Ever since I got here, Craig's been wonderful. He's been to, uh, Police Department fixing things a lot and regularly. But I really appreciate it because he's always got a story to tell when he's in there too. I've learned a lot about Cloverdale and a lot about Craig in a short period of time. So I really appreciate everything you've done for us, Craig.
Madam Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak about Craig. And, you know, he's a, a very valuable member of our, our team at the City of Cloverdale. One thing I wanted to touch on in particular, I think, Councilmember Bagby, you, you raised a question about internments. One of the responsibilities that, uh, Mr. Johnson has taken on is a burial of, uh, individuals at our Cloverdale Cemetery. He most recently, uh, had the responsibility of an internment at the cemetery of a very high-profile individual that served in, in the armed forces. And it was acknowledged, the care, uh, that, uh, Mr. Johnson took to respect the remains of the, uh, the individual. And the, the family really acknowledged the, just the care and service that he provided, uh, for, for, for those remains and, 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 uh, the, the care he provided to the family during a very sensitive moment. And I just want to acknowledge, it's a, really something that a lot of city, uh, staff workers don't, don't do. But, uh, Mr. Johnson has, has taken on that role for the city and he's provided a lot of care, uh, in that role. And I just want to acknowledge that this, it's a pretty special service that he provides to the city.
Well, I didn't know that. Thank you, Craig. Because it is respecting the dignity of an individual to the last minute. So thank you very much. Thank you. All right. Well, at this moment, uh, we'll move on to receive our student liaison report. Hello, Guadalupe.
Hello, thank you, Madam Mayor. So today's report is a brief one, but still very meaningful. On December 3rd and 4th, our drama class entertained us with an evening of two one-act plays. This took a lot of time and effort from the class, but it was well worth as it was a marvelous production. The Interact Club is still having their Code Drive, so please feel free to donate. Boxes for the collections will be, uh, spread out throughout the classrooms. So be sure to send in your donations. As I mentioned at our last meeting, fall sports were concluded. However, I would like to take a moment to thank the Boosters Club for providing a charter bus, not only for the players, but also for a handful of students who were able to join the football team in their second game in the NCS Division VII 2021 playoffs game against St. Helena. This game also marked the end of an amazing season for the football team. Winter sports have begun. In fact, this week we will, or we are having the McMillan Invitational Basketball Tournament, which will last from the Saturday until, excuse me, from this Thursday until Saturday. Please feel free to join us in support of our Eagles. Lastly, the end of the semester is only a week and a half away, meaning finals. We are all keeping busy and catching up on last bits of work as we look forward to winter break. Thank you.
Thank you, Guadalupe. And I will follow up with you regarding some, uh, scholarships that will become available for some students in school. So I need your advice.
Can we ask what, what the last day of school is too, before winter break?
Yeah, when is the last day?
It is not this Friday, but next Friday.
Okay.
Seventeenth.
So we can bring coats until, or until people do.
Yes, and I think we'll probably run it even after the break, but it'd be good to get something in.
Thank you.
Okay. Everybody, make sure that you bring your old coats that are in good condition to the Interact Club at the school, at the high school, correct?
Yes, there's, uh, some boxes spread out throughout classrooms. If not, if you can hand it into the office, we'll go ahead and take care of it.
Thank you. Very well. So at this point, we'll go ahead and, um, move on to the consent calendar, pulling out item D, uh, seven.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to introduce the consent cali- calendar, D one through D nine, excluding D seven for approval.
I'll second that.
Okay. It was Councilmember Paula, second by Vice Mayor Lance.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Caucus five zero. Thank you.
At this moment, I would like to go ahead and, uh, present, uh, Madeleine Wallace. Uh, D seven. Yeah, it's D seven. So, uh, this is the appointment of Madeleine Wallace to the Planning Commissioner as an alternate member with a term expiration of December 2023. And I would like to call Madeleine to the front so that all of us can get to see your eyes and your hair. So this is Madeleine Wallace. And we have, um, Guadalupe, our student liaison, Chief Ferguson, Councilmember Bagby, Councilmember Walter, Councilmember Paula, Vice Mayor Lance. We have City Manager David Kelly, Assistant City Manager Kevin Thompson, and our City Attorney, Jose Sanchez. So now I open. And, oh, well, Susie, you're down there. I'm sorry. And I'm trying to look without foggy my glasses. And our financial manager for the city, Susie. Okay? So I do know that the first one to leave questions is Councilmember Walter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madeleine, I just want to say thank you for putting your name in the hat. And it's really comforting to me that we have some representation outside of the city limits. You live out in the county and of course you're within that five-mile range. But I always like to get the perspective of, of people that are out in the county looking in at the city. And, and by all means, you know, don't be afraid to bring up something that's, uh, that you see out in the county that maybe we could, uh, talk to Supervisor Gore about, uh, to get things fixed. So, uh, welcome aboard and, uh, look forward to working with you.
I just want to welcome you. Thank you for your volunteering step up. It's a, it's a wonderful commission. They do a lot of hard work, a lot of heavy lifting. I know you'll look out for what's best for the city long-term. That's what it's about. So thank you for your service.
Madeleine, I just want to thank you. And we know, I know you through, um, the, the fire safety group and through COPE and all the other volunteer work that you do. You're, you know, deeply involved in the community. So thank you. Thank you so much for stepping up and taking us on. I was a planning commissioner for seven years and I, I, I just found it to be, um, a great way to serve the community and learn about local issues. And I just thank you for, um, for stepping up and bringing your perspective. We look forward to having you.
I would like to echo what they've said so far. I, except I have, I don't know you. I look forward to getting to know you through the Planning Commission. And thank you for your volunteering.
Well, I met, uh, Madeleine through her volunteer work in the community. She has been an advocate for everybody in the community. And she has been an incredible saver of very many little dogs and cats in the community. She has made sure that they all have a home. I also know that she's very good with the machete. She likes to clean up, uh, all the, all the paths and, and roads, uh, out there in the county and throughout her neighborhood. So Madeleine, the rest of the community do not know you. And I would like to know if you would give us a little bit of background briefly so that we know who Madeleine Wallace is.
Hello, everyone, and thank you. You're welcome.
Address the, the microphone. It's on, it's on.
It's on?
Yes.
My husband and I moved here 20 years ago. We came from Southern California, worked for NASA JPL, and, um...
Jet Propulsion Laboratories?
I'm sorry, Jet Propulsion Laboratories. Yes. And three weeks after we moved into our home, um, a fire got us going on brush clearing. And we carried it now to our neighbors and, um, River Road and the Summer Bridge, um, just to help out the county. Because if we protect ourselves, we also protect you all in the city. So fire prevention is one of my main things besides rescuing animals. But, um, I drove seniors from Cloverdale down to the senior center in Hillsburg for a number of years. And I worked with the Healthcare Foundation. I just liked, I was somewhat bored after fixing up our house and so I started just doing volunteer work. And I know Marta and Cecile Peters and I, when the pandemic hit, we did some fundraising for gift cards for some of the people in need for Cloverdale. for gift cards for some of the people in need for Cloverdale. And I just like helping. So that's it.
And I would say that she was quite instrumental in assisting in establishing a cooling center during the very hot days in the summer at the Veterans Hall. So thank you very much for your assistance.
Thank you.
Okay.
So Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve your proposed appointment of Madeleine Wallace as an alternative member to the Planning Commission for a term to expire in December 2023.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
And Madam Mayor, before I vote on the item, I just recommend a check-in with our clerk if there's any public comments.
Yes.
No, no handle.
Okay. Thank you very much. So go ahead and do the roll call.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
And Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Thank you. Five zero passes.
Thank you very much. At this moment, we're going to go ahead and move to communications. David?
Madam Mayor, note, no communications in your agenda packet this evening.
Thank you. Now, this is a public hearing. Items will begin at the time shown. And the new business is considering adopting a resolution approving an individual at-will employment agreement with Jill Garibaldi for the position of City Clerk for the City of Cloverdale. David, please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm really delighted to bring this item forward. As you stated, Mayor, the request this evening is adoption of a resolution approving an agreement, an at-will employment agreement with Ms. Jill Garibaldi for the position of City Clerk. A little bit of background regarding Ms. Garibaldi. She most recently served for over six years with the City of Santa Rosa in the Community Development Department. Prior to that, she was, worked for a private employer for about two years. But before that, she worked for the City of Cloverdale for almost 11 years, or just slightly over 11 years, in various positions, including Department Secretary, Administrative Assistant, Planning Technician, and Deputy City Clerk. It's with quite a bit of delight that Ms. Garibaldi has accepted the terms of employment that are provided and outlined in your packet, which include a term that identifies the start date of December 13th of 2021. That's next Monday. So we've been busy prepping her office in anticipation of her, of her starting, getting her computer and everything ready. Her email is activated. We have identified in the agenda report a base compensation of $98,597.42 annually. This is a step two in a step five, in a five-step system. We also have identified other benefits, including vacation leave, accrual of up to 20 days per year, or 7.69 hours per pay period, total of accrual of 10 hours of sick leave per month, admin leave of up to 80 hours per calendar year, particularly in recognition of the time that's going to be required for evening work, like attending council meetings and weekend work. In addition, a mobile device stipend of $50 a month for, for cellphone services, and I'm sure I'll have Mrs. Garibaldi's phone number on speed dial. And last but not least, a mountain budget for professional development, including attending conferences, certain, so want to be a member of the California Clerks Association. The, the full at-will employment agreement was included in your packet and is attached for your review. Staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution in your packet approving the at-will agreement. And of course, our recommendation is you approve the agreement tonight. And we're very excited to see Ms. Garibaldi start on, on Monday. And I know she's in the audience, so it's up to you, Mayor and council, if you'd like to invite her up to the dais and say a few words.
I know your last name by Plaza Garibaldi in Mexico.
Italian.
Everywhere, right?
Right. Good afternoon, council members, staff, and public. Yeah, so City Manager Kelly did a very good job at explaining my history. I've worked with the majority of you actually in the past, but for those of you that do not know me, I am Jill Garibaldi. I did work for the City of Cloverdale for approximately 11 years in my past, started as a planning secretary, and then was promoted to Planning Technician, and I took a role on as Deputy City Clerk. And then most recently, I worked for the City of Santa Rosa for nearly seven years. Started as a, as a Community Development Technician for their Planning and Economic Development Department. And then took a role as Senior, which is a leadership position for the Community Development Technicians. And I just completed a year-long temporary assignment as the interim permit intake manager for the City of Santa Rosa. I really appreciate and am excited about this opportunity. I am born and raised Sonoma County. I've lived in Cloverdale for 21 years. I've raised two boys here. And I'm very happy to come back and serve this community, to serve the council, the Planning Commission, and your various boards and committees. And yes, so if you adopt the agreement tonight, I will be starting on Monday, the 13th. And I really would appreciate you each stopping by. I know I have some questions for each of you. I'm sure that you have questions for me and that you would also like to share, have information to share. So please, if you find yourself at City Hall with a couple of extra minutes, come see me. Thank you, and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to express my excitement and gratitude to have Jill back in the organization. Jill is the first person to, to, who administered an oath of office for me when I started off as an alternate planning commissioner. And so we go way back, and she's just been a wonderful friend and neighbor. She's so professional, she's so gracious, and it just goes to show, we have great homeground talent here in Cloverdale. And I'm just so happy that you're back, and I hope that, you know, we can continue your professional development. I mean, you just have a wonderful breadth of municipal and building experience, and I'm hoping that, you know, we can offer opportunities for you to grow that. We're just so grateful to have you back as, as our clerk and looking forward to meeting with you and working with you. And I know that the public is going to be very, very grateful to have you back as well. So thank you so much. And I'm, I hope you appreciate your, the warm welcome and the much shorter commute. So, welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, it's hard to beat what Councilmember Bagby said, so I want to ditto that. It's been a pleasure working with you in the past, and I'm very excited that you're coming back. You're just a wealth of knowledge about our city, and you've been so helpful throughout the years. And I just want to say thank you for coming back and welcome back.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jill, just welcome back. I can't top what, what Joe and Melanie said, we'd be here all night. But thank you for applying, look forward to working with you again. Thank you.
Yes, we are very happy to have a clerk. And luckily, you're a local with a lot of knowledge, and that's what we need. So, thank you very much.
So that'll make a motion for the resolution by title only. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale approving an at-will employment agreement with Jill Garibaldi for the City of Cloverdale City Clerk and authorizing the City Manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Second that. Woo-hoo.
Okay. Laurie, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Mayor Bag, I mean, Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
That was a, that was an aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
And Mayor Cruz?
Happily saying yes.
Passes five zero. Thank you.
Very well.
Now get to work. Welcome back.
Okay. Susie, she's going to take over.
Okay. I'll go move.
All right. You can see the excitement in, in council. This is long overdue. All right. So now we're going to review and discuss of updated City Council 2022 Subcommittee Joint Meeting Regional Board Committee Appointments. Really? Did I jump something?
G two.
Oh. Oh, G two. Yes. Proving the position of Proposals for Parks Superintendent, David.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. And again, I'm very delighted to bring this, this item forward. A little bit of background, you know, Park, our Park Maintenance Division is currently supported by, you know, two full-time positions, a Park, a Park Maintenance Lead position and a Park and Landscape Maintenance Assistant. This is, this employee classification really represents what's the entirety of our Parks Division, is, is those two full-time positions. But, but the division is supported by two part-time employees, part, part of which is funded through Measure M, the Parks Fund. So I want to thank the voters of Sonoma County for their support for parks. The, the city has an adopted personnel system that, that calls for the preparation, revision, and maintenance of a classification plan that covers, you know, all positions within the city, and that's pursuant to our Cloverdale Municipal Code. The position descriptions were originally developed in 2005, and they have been modified and updated as needed since that time. Of course, from time to time, it is necessary to revise and update our employee classification system, in particular, to really accurately reflect the, the job duties as required by the city. And I think this is what's, what's driving the proposed reclass tonight, is really to update the, the classification for the Park Maintenance Lead, or really adding a new classification to our personnel system to reflect a new position within the personnel system that reflects the duties that are carried out by the current Park Maintenance Lead. What staff did is a very thorough job analysis evaluating the current position of the Park and Landscape Lead worker. We determined that it did not, or does not accurately reflect the job as it's currently carried out, nor does it reflect what we'd like to see or envision this position to be able to do going forward. In particular, we'd like to be able to develop Parks and Rec programs within the city, again, as the budget permits. But we see this as an opportunity, especially with the current incumbent, to further develop our, our Parks program and, and support many of our existing programs that are offered by our nonprofit organizations, such as our Cloverdale Youth Soccer, Cloverdale Little League, some of the rec programs that we'd like to, that we've, you know, started to develop with, with our other nonprofit organizations, like the Cloverdale Multi, the Senior Multipurpose Center, as, as well as to continue to develop and provide additional programming of our critical parks facilities. We see a tremendous demand and interest from our community, and, and I think what, what reflects is a, is a real interest in building upon the, the services that, that are provided by our nonprofit organizations. And as that demand increases, being able to better manage the, the park space and the park amenities that we, we currently have in our park system. So city staff, as, as part of this evaluation, really looked at the job classification and, and provided in your packet an updated job class for a park superintendent. We, we did a comprehensive analysis, really looking at a number of our comparator cities in terms of what that job description entails, and, and really tailored a, a new job description that reflects the duties and roles and responsibilities of the position within the City of Cloverdale. What's included in your packet is that updated job classification, along with a proposed salary schedule. In, in terms of development of the salary schedule, staff utilized, our HR team utilized the, kind of the past precedent that the, the council has set with setting, setting wage schedules for your, your personnel, including adapting that to, you know, align within both external market, but also internal alignment. So that, that's included in your packet. I think what, what we really want to set out is a, is a vision for, at some point in the future, establishing a formal Parks and Rec Department. But what we're proposing at this time, again, is this new classification and to align it within the Community Development Department, have it be a Community Development and Parks Department to bring, again, try to elevate parks within, within the city organization. We, we recognize, however, that our, our Parks Team are, represent a critical component of our emergency response, particularly related to responding to such things as water main leaks, sewer leaks, and a whole host of other emergencies that we often are called upon to respond to. And given our small but nimble team, we do, we do want to ensure that the, this new classification would be responsible for continuing to provide that support services as necessary. After the agenda packet was published, we, we held a, a Finance, Admin, and Police Subcommittee where there was some discussion around that and desire to update the draft classification that was included in your agenda packet. So staff did update the job class to reflect and ensure that those responsibilities were embodied within the job class. So after the agenda was published, staff did send council an updated job class that modified a couple of the job responsibilities to, again, reflect the input from the Finance, Admin, and Police Subcommittee. And also just acknowledge that the development of future Parks and Rec programs is subject to budgetary constraints. I think it goes necessarily, it kind of goes without saying that often, you know, the, the types of services that we're able to offer are subject to budgetary concerns, but we did want to reflect that in the, in the job description, just so it provides accurate messaging to, to the employee that holds that position, as well as to the city and the community. So I'll kind of pause there. Again, we, we think this is an important opportunity to update a critical, one of the critical job classifications within our personnel system to, again, reflect what we see as, you know, many of the responsibilities that the, the incumbent holds in a Park Maintenance Lead position, but really is functioning at a higher level. And we, and we recommend that we, we, council adopt this new job classification and new salary range to reflect those duties and also embody the vision that we'd like to see in terms of developing park services within, within our community.
Thank you. Any comments from, yes?
I just want to thank the City Manager and the clerk for sending out those red-lined job descriptions that reflected the changes of the, the subcommittees. I think that that was, that was really important input, and it kind of addressed some of my concerns when I first read it. But I did have a question about how the, the job description was created, and I, I wanted to make sure, because I think it's important whenever we create, it's, I know we're not creating a job description from scratch. I know that there are a lot of sources out there in similar positions, you know, in the region that you can pull from. But I want to make sure that, you know, when we're creating this with a vision of going forward for a future, you know, Park, Parks and Rec Department, that, that HR consultant firm that we are on contract with has taken a look at it and, and vetted it and made sure that it has a good basis going forward. And I just think it's a good time in, you know, in a related issue, and I think, and you mentioned a very important component of the Parks Crew, and that is, is that they work on a lot of things besides parks. They work on water, they work on sewer issues, they work on emergency issues. And, you know, I, I think it's a really good opportunity now, especially we're going into the budget cycle for next year, that we make sure that we do an audit of all of those cost centers, make sure that they are accurately described, and that they are, that, that the, you know, crew, all of the crews are making sure that they record that information very carefully. Because I know that that's, you know, especially where water and sewer is concerned, you know, that's something that is, is very highly regulated. We need to make sure that we've got all of our ducks in a row there. So I was wondering if you could just kind of comment on some of those questions? And so that's, that's what I would like to, to see us do going, going forward for this position. And just make sure that if we're making that transition, that we're set up for success for recording the different kinds of work that each of the, you know, make, based, making sure that the cost centers are reported accurately when the guys and the gals are being told from project to project. that the cost centers are reported accurately when the guys and the gals are being told from project to project.
Councilmember Bagby, I'm very happy to address your questions. And I'll, I'll kind of start with the job classification and really reflect the work that that staff did. Our, our work started with really evaluating the current job, job description or our job classification for the, for the Park Maintenance Lead Position and evaluating what services are in, what tasks and responsibilities are currently being provided by the incumbent that are not included in that. And and starting, that's kind of a starting point to look at what are the key roles and responsibilities that the, the position is currently performing. A good example of that is preparing parks budgets. That's not currently a role and responsibility for the Park Maintenance Lead Position, but that's a critical, a critical role. And that's identified, for example, in the, in the new proposed job classification. To me, that's a very important function of a manager position is development of budgets that, and it's usually one of those critical items that you look at in terms of determining whether a position is salaried versus, or exempt versus non-exempt. And and so that, to me, that's, that is a critical kind of definition or kind of meets that critical definition of of being exempt is developing and being responsible for for budgets and overseeing that budget and managing that budget. And and that's, that's been a key responsibility for for the incumbent, but it's not identified in the current job description. So building from there, of course, making sure that we incorporate all the new job response, or all the existing job responsibilities in the new classification. We, we do a comprehensive survey of other job descriptions to make sure we're not missing anything that it, that a typical Park Superintendent type of classification would do for other, other municipalities and making sure that we're, we're covering those roles and responsibilities. But also, you know, identifying where we, as a city, may differ in those, in those services. Another example of that is most cities don't require their Park Superintendent to be a certified arborist. Well, we've built that into the proposed new classification. Again, that's not something that's in the, the Park Maintenance Lead Classification, but now is included in the proposed or draft classification that's been provided in your packet. So we, we, we do it both from a kind of an internal review process, but also an external review process of looking at and ensure we, we, we have a comprehensive analysis of the job functions, both internally and externally. To your, directly to your question, did we employ a firm to do an analysis of that? We, we did not. But if council so directs, we're happy to to bring that back. I think that's something that council may want to discuss as part of the budget process is, is doing a comprehensive evaluation of your job classification system. It's indicated in the presentation, you know, it was originally developed in 2005. So we're now, you know, 16 years, you know, beyond that point. So it does kind of point to maybe the need to really look at it comprehensively. But, you know, again, we didn't do that here. We really looked at the specific position and updated it accordingly. In terms of, of, I think the other issue that we brought forward was a cost allocation of positions. I know that is something that our Finance Director looks at very closely almost every budget year to ensure that we are accurately reflecting and placing the, the employees' salaries in the appropriate cost centers, whether it's billed to Water, Waste Water, Streets, or the General Fund or Landscape and Lighting Districts. Many of those functions, you know, the cost allocation is based specifically on timesheets. And those employees do, you know, obviously, every, every two weeks, they prepare timesheets, and we, we track those very closely. We want to ensure that we are tracking their employee time and putting those, that, that, those wages in the appropriate cost center. With that said, we haven't done a comprehensive organizational cost allocation study. That's, again, something we can, we can perform. Usually that's done by an outside, you know, with outside assistance, where it almost at an auditing level, you come in and they study time of every employee for a certain period of time to kind of evaluate and ensure that there's, the cost allocation is accurate. But I think likewise, our Finance Director is very astute in ensuring that our, our cost allocation is pretty, pretty well up to date. We do tend to update it and make some adjustments as needed as part of our budget development process. Again, making sure that it's as accurate as possible. I think there's, you know, you really see that often in the, particularly in the Landscape and Lighting District budgets that come before council, where there's this kind of three-year rolling average of, you know, actual time spent within each of the LNLs, and we, we adjust those accordingly. So the, you know, those are, those salaries are set almost, you know, really dialed in to the amount of time that's spent by the employees performing the work within those, in those special districts. So I hope, Councilmember Bagby addressed your questions, but I'm happy if I, if I missed something to follow up.
That answers my question. I'd like to hear what the other council and the public have to say, so, great, thank you.
Yeah, I'm fine, Madam Mayor.
No, I'm fine. We had a long conversation in our Subcommittee on this, so no, I'm. The one part I just want to point out that I'm extremely happy about as well is the fact now, since we don't have our own Park and Rec Department, so to speak, where they put programs on, we'll have a liaison now that's going to be working with the volunteer groups and where they, to, a go-to person to help facilitate programs that are within, that are performed by volunteers, and that's throughout the city. And that, that's a huge improvement in this, and that's going to be one of the, the duties of this new position, so, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had most of my questions answered, and a lot of it was handled in the new job description that was provided.
Redline, yeah.
The only concern I have, and I brought up to you, David, on Monday, was I worry about when we separate departments, because then they need their own equipment or have to rent it from another one, and it becomes a budgetary issue. A little more work for, for our Susie down here. However, I, it's hard for me when you don't have like an umbrella over the top of it, where, like, as in the police department, the chief oversees everyone, even though we have basically your sergeants, your lieutenants, your, your foremen of the bunches, and it's still the same group, so they can still drive any patrol car they want. At this point, they can't. They can't drive a water truck unless they pay for it. And that concerns me that we might have to go out and buy a Parks shovel, a Parks rake, because they can't use somebody else without renting it. So I just, I worry about future with how much it's going to cost us. They did this back B C J, before Craig Johnson. And they separated every single place with one supervisor and one worker, and everyone would stand around and look at each other. And so I really worry about that, and I'm glad you handled a lot of that with the way you worded it, and that's perfectly done. But that's my concern for the future, is that we're going to be costing us more money than than we realize.
Madam Mayor?
I think it's kind of a working process. It's a living document, and it would only improve our organization.
I, I, I think the Vice Mayor brings up a really good point, and that, that was another, that was farther down in my notes that I didn't get to, because I was like, okay, that was, that's enough for now. But I think the equipment question is a big concern, because, you know, you don't want to have two backhoes, you don't want to have two, you know, cherry pickers, you don't, you know, all that kind of stuff. I mean, Craig's not going to give up his cherry picker, because that guy lives in a cherry picker. So, you know, so that's kind of a question that I see going forward. So, you know, I think that I can support it as it is written by now, but I, but in future agenda items, I am going to bring up that I do want to see a, a plan going forward and have, you know, these positions and these salaries and everything audited. And also just make sure that we are very clear about the delineation of people, the delineation of equipment, and that that's going to work smoothly and that we're not going to have to be spending money that's unnecessarily, because I know we have to run a really tight ship for now. We are so desperately understaffed, and we need to make sure that we are spending very, very wisely, because, you know, we, we are, you know, we're so, we're so thinly staffed. And in order to really, you know, provide the level of community support that our taxpayers deserve, we need to start expanding our tax base, and we need to start expanding our, our staff as well. But let's make sure we have a really good foundation to do that going forward.
Yes, this is, this is definitely a conversation we had during the Subcommittee, and I'm glad to see that two more council members share my concerns too. Please, Councilmember Walter. Oh, yes, definitely, oh, yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I, I, I think our departments are so small that this is something that, yes, as the city gets bigger, we may have to be concerned about it, but not on the level where we are now. I think this is really off into the future, so, but, but it is a good point, the cost allocations for equipment, yes. And I'm sure Susie's got her arms around that already.
Would you like to comment on that, Susie?
I would just add that moving Parks and Rec from Parks only is still all going to be General Fund. So there is no change to, to that. And they'll still be doing the same amount of work in the lighting and landscape and, and streets. So it's, it's, there's, I don't think you're going to see a big change to the General Fund.
Yes, and, you know, I want to say to the council that I'm pretty relieved that this is coming around. The individual who will be performing this has definitely earned it. And not only that, you know, we have very many partners in parks throughout the county, throughout Sonoma County. And one of our big allies is also Landpass, who have been in the city a couple of times. And the last activity, I coordinated it all the way. And it would have been wonderful to have had Hector doing that at the time. But it really opens up the possibilities that we have, not only with Landpass, but also with Daily Axe and very many other organizations throughout the county. And it would be great to be able to refer these individuals to Hector to move on. And we need to support whomever is now or in the future in this position, because our community needs to have opportunities to enjoy the parks that we do have, because we do have parks and we have open space, and we will probably have more open space in the future. So now I'll open to the public to see if there are any comments before we vote on this item. Do we see any hands or anybody in the public here would like to comment on this item?
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised? Okay.
Madam Mayor, I just want to take the opportunity, this is an example of Subcommittee doing a lot of heavy lifting, and not just saving us time, but just being really efficient, taking the input and city staff responding to our concerns. I, and I think that staff has kind of heard the, some of the concerns going forward and, and things that the council wants to look out for, like the, the equipment issues, the cost allocation issues, and that, you know, this has kind of brought, and brought it to the fore that it's been since 2005, since we've really looked at our, our positions and our job descriptions. It kind of, it's, and this is, I think, a natural thing that happens after multiple national disasters and a pandemic, is that we go, you know, two years later, oh, this came up. Oh, well, gee, we haven't looked at some of this since 2005. So I think it's kind of a natural thing, since we're, we're kind of settling back down and we're out of, a little bit out of crisis mode, we need to look at, you know, some of the, the issues that have arisen, and it's time to, it's time to revisit things like the positions and their titles and their descriptions, and it's, it's kind of refocusing us to do the work that, that we need to do in, in 2022. So I would like to offer the resolution, by title-only resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale, amending the city personnel system to create a Parks Superintendent classification as it was updated by the city manager earlier today.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Lori?
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye. Councilmember.
Oh, I didn't hear it. Aye, aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Ice Mayor Lans?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
That's five zero, thank you.
And I need to request a five-minute break. Thank you.
Going to be a first year.
We're going to resume? All right, so at this moment, we'll go ahead and move to G3, which is Staff Recommends that the City Council Review and Discuss Subcommittee, Joint Committee, and Regional Board Council Assignments. So, David, do you have?
Madam Mayor, just a brief presentation on this item. The agenda report provides an overview of what staff is requesting. Just by way of background, every year, starting in January, the council appoints council members to regional boards as well as your five council subcommittees. What we typically do at this time is solicit your input and obtain your recommendations for sitting on those regional boards as well as subcommittees. What we've included in your packet is a set of preference indication worksheets to identify which subcommittees each council member would like to sit on, as well as what regional boards you'd like to participate on. Ultimately, some of those regional boards do require formal appointment by the council and some of which include also appointment by and through the mayor, Sonoma County Mayor and Council Members Association. At this meeting tonight, we're really just providing council the opportunity to, you know, start that discussion and ask staff any questions they may have about the preference indication worksheets. I'm requesting that you take the opportunity to review those, the subcommittee roles as well as the regional boards, and provide your preference indication worksheets back to me prior to December 31st or no later than. What staff will do is compile the results and bring those back for council's consideration at your January 12th meeting, where you can, you know, make your final determination. And ultimately, staff will bring it back to set the meeting times and the formal appointments at the following meeting on January 26th. So really, it's more or less an informational item at this time. But if you'd like to see an alternative process or a different process for the regional board appointments or subcommittees, you can certainly provide that feedback now and we can bring it back at the 12th. But this kind of follows the historical practice that we've utilized, where we get your preference indication worksheets and then staff will bring back, you know, a set of recommendations for council's considerations, just based on what preferences you indicate and what your interests are as council members. There's quite a bit of workload on the subcommittees and time commitments associated with regional boards. The city has very little say in terms of the meeting times for the regional boards. But council does have the opportunity to designate meeting dates and times for your subcommittees. Of course, there are two joint subcommittees. One includes the Joint City School Subcommittee and the other the Joint City Fire Subcommittee. So often, you know, some collaboration with our partners there on, you know, setting meeting dates and meeting times. Again, what we do is we ultimately adopt that by resolution as required by the government code, so that those meeting dates and times are set. And what that does is does, kind of, provides the community, you know, the dates and times of when those meetings are planned to occur. But if you cancel, we can always schedule a special meeting. So that's staff's overview. Happy to address any questions council may have about those preference indication worksheets or your discussion about the regional board appointments and subcommittee appointments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I've served on the Public Works Subcommittee for a while now. We've always met bi-monthly. I'd really like to see us step that up to a monthly meeting going into 2022. There just seems to be a lot on the table. And for us to go bi-monthly, I just think is not very productive. I know staff has a lot on their plate, but I think this is something that's important. And I'd just like to poll my fellow council members to see how they feel about that as well.
Yeah, I think that given the federal and state money that's probably going to come to infrastructure, I would highly support that. And I hate to, again, I hate to ask staff to burden them with another meeting, but I think it's going to be necessary.
No, I agree. I honestly think it should be every month at least. And if there's a light month where we don't need it, we certainly can cancel that meeting, certainly.
That's a good option, Councilmember Powell. Any other comments from council? I think that would be the only suggestion, Mr. Kelly.
I think, you know, staff would recommend that, you know, once you make the appointments, council may want to kind of, you know, look at the timeframes and make sure that the meeting dates and times kind of correspond to each of your respective schedules. But we can note that the meetings for the Public Works Subcommittee will be otherwise planned on, you know, monthly. We'll have to check to confirm how that corresponds to holidays and other meetings, so that, you know, you don't have overlap in meeting dates of subcommittees on the same, you know, the same day and time. So that's something we'll have to look at. And we can bring forward and show if there are any possible overlaps in those. Of course, you know, the workload with the subcommittees has grown quite a bit. And staff does spend a lot of time preparing those agendas and getting those items necessary. But that's a reflection of the necessary work that we're performing.
Well, through the chair, I hear we're getting a great clerk to help us out with a lot of that scheduling of those issues, so.
Oh, yes, definitely.
Well, actually, we have a great clerk. She's already on the hook.
Full basket, Ms. Garibaldi. Okay, so. Any public comments on this before we vote?
Madam Mayor, no vote required this evening?
No votes, I see. I'm reading here, Recommended Actions, no votes. So you have our recommendation. And any public comments on any of this?
No hands are raised.
Okay, thank you very much. So at this point, we're going to move on to reorganization of council and selection of mayor and vice mayor. So at this point, did you want to say something, David, before I move on?
Madam Mayor, just by background, this is the process that the council engages in usually, you know, annually and usually at your first meeting in December, because we typically cancel the second meeting, which we have done this year. And once appointed, the mayor would then, and new vice mayor would then take, you know, start their terms in 2022.
Thank you. I want to take this moment to go ahead and submit the rotation to be for Vice Mayor Lance as mayor and Councilmember Bagby as vice mayor.
Madam Mayor, I think those should be done separately. Last year was the first year that we ever did both mayor and vice mayor with one action. I really think they need to be separate items.
And what is the feel of the rest of the council?
I'd like to see it separate as well.
And Todd?
No preference.
Bagby? No preference? Ah, no preference, so we have three people with no preference and two with separate, so I think.
I mean, I'd like to hear what they have to say if they need to, you know, if they have a concern.
So what is the reason for that?
Well, you know, we may support an individual as the mayor, but there may be somebody that we don't support as vice mayor and vice versa. And last year, I think was the first year that we actually did them with one vote. So it just kind of separates and each individual stands on their own.
And what is your thought, Councilmember Powell?
I would like to see them separate as well.
I'm asking, what's the reason? He gave his reason.
Well, because I, I'll just, I plan to nominate Councilmember Walter for vice mayor.
Okay. All right. But there's still a majority of three.
So if we take it one at a time, we can vote on them and it may or may not pass. So you have a motion, a recommendation for Vice Mayor Lance. Why don't we take that one first?
Okay. Melanie and Todd, what is your position? You want to see it as two or you want to see it as one?
No preference.
I'd like to see it as separate, just like it is on the.
Okay, so we're going to do it separately. So I have a nomination for Vice Mayor Lance as mayor.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Lori?
Excuse me, Councilmember Bagby?
No.
Councilmember Walter?
Yes.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Passes five to zero.
Nope.
Congratulations.
Four to one.
Oh, who voted no?
Bagby, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Then I, yes.
And just, I know we're only selecting, it's just selection nomination, but just checking, I know we've checked in the past if there was any public comment. Just to check if there are any hands.
No hands are raised.
Thank you, Mayor.
And then I had nominated Councilmember Bagby for vice mayor. Is there a second for that?
I'm going to decline the nomination.
Okay, so I hear.
Will that be declined?
Bagby declined.
Bagby declined, thank you.
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Walter for vice mayor. That's Paula.
I'll second.
Mayor Lance, thank you. Councilmember Bagby?
No.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
No.
Vice Mayor, or Mayor Lance?
Aye.
So it passes by three to two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this moment, do we have any additional comments? David?
Madam Mayor, I don't have any additional comments. I want to just recognize your work as mayor in 2021. You led us through some challenging times. And I want to thank you for all the work that you've done in your service to the community as mayor. And I want to welcome Vice Mayor to the mayorship. So I look forward to working with Mayor Lance in his new capacity.
Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, I would like to do the same. I'd like to echo what David just said. It has been a pleasure over the past year, working with you, collaborating with you. I just wrote some simple notes here and I'm not going to go through it all. But I want to tell you that it's been great because we don't think the same. And that's the best part of it, because we find ways to work for everyone. And there's a lot of people that I don't think about that you do and vice versa. And together, we've done a lot in the short amount of time. And I thank you for everything that you've done.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to ditto that. I think you did an excellent job as mayor. And I know throughout the year, I've complimented you after certain meetings with a thumbs up or, you know, a nice job. And I think you did an excellent job. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, I'd just like to say, I know we don't always agree, but I certainly do always respect and I think highly, you've done a lot. And I think we agree more times than we don't. But I just want to thank you for all your hard work. You've done a really, really good job. Thank you.
Well, as you know, I thank the collaboration from everybody in staff and on council. And I have been working very hard from day one in this council. And I will continue to do so. Because the issues that Cloverdale is facing are not going away. And we need to continue that mutual and collaborative vision to make things happen. And that's what I would like to see in the last year of my service as council member. So at this point, I would like to know if there are any subcommittee items that we need to discuss. We just had a very engaged Finance Administration and Police Subcommittee meeting. The next one will be in January. Planning on sustainability?
Yeah, our next meeting is December 21st at 4:00 p.m. We'll be discussing dog park site alternatives. And I think looming is the ordinance update on disposable foodware and imagine conformance with SB 13, I'm going to get the number wrong, 1383? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Public Works?
Madam Mayor, our next meeting will be January the 18th. I'm really excited that the Public Works Committee has a few projects that are almost ready to bring back to the full city council. One of them is the pickleball courts. We're looking at Ferber Park. Of course, everybody probably knows about the basketball courts at Second Street Park. And I think we've also zeroed in on public restrooms for the plaza. So I'm excited about that. And our goal is to bring it back vote-ready. So once the full city council gives it a thumbs up, we can put them out on bid.
And I have a question. I would like to add an item to the subcommittee, to the Public Works Subcommittee. Should I do that at future items or can I do that now?
Mayor, I think if you'd like to bring it up now, it certainly is fine. But you're more than welcome to wait till future items.
Okay, well, I'll just go ahead and do it now. I would like for Public Works Subcommittee to consider paving of East Cherry Creek Road or Street, whatever it's called. or Street, whatever it's called. Is it a road or a street?
I believe it's a street.
Yes.
They're boulevard down to Carmen.
Yes. It's not even a street. It's a crater path.
We went through that with Rocky Dale.
Oh, Rocky Dale is nothing in comparison to this. So it's something that really needs to be addressed.
I think the first thing we'd need is, is it a city property or is it privately owned? So if we could have that information when we come back to the Public Works Subcommittee, we can go from there.
Yes, I mentioned to city manager earlier today to have the acting city engineer look at that particular segment of town. Okay, and Joint Fire City District, February 14th to celebrate Valentine's Day. And Todd, and Joint City and Homeless Community Advisory.
Okay, so with the Joint City School District, we recently had a meeting, a special meeting together to discuss some clarifying points from the school's point of view regarding development. It was very informative, and at this point, the city's attorney and the school's attorney are working to develop, almost like an agreement, I guess, a negotiation to say, you know, here's where our points are from, and almost kind of, because our attorney says we don't do school law, so he's learning and vice versa. So that's where they're, with that, there is no meeting scheduled because we had to cancel our next one because it fell on a holiday, so the next meeting is to be determined at this point. As for the homelessness community, sorry, the homelessness community advisory group, December 14th at 5 o'clock is our next meeting, and there's nothing new. It's been a while since we've had one.
Okay, and I need to tell you that I may have to be absent on that day.
Okay. Hopefully not.
Well, at this point, subcommittee reports, verbal reports only. Anybody has verbal?
I just have an additional update. Yeah, I submitted my council report in writing, but I got additional news that at Friday, I don't know if Nina, you know, Nina took off, but at the Winterfest, I missed a text from the incoming SMART General Manager, Eddie Cummings. He and his wife actually came up to Winterfest to check out Cloverdale. And because I was coordinating with my guest at the holiday party, I just, we just, we missed each other. But he's up here, he attended, and it's on my, it's on my council report, he had, has had his first SMART meeting. And yeah, so he actually came up to Cloverdale to check out Winterfest, and he and his wife are looking to get very involved in our local communities. He and his wife both commented that they're probably going to locate in Petaluma, and they're looking forward to getting e-bikes and exploring Sonoma and Marin Counties. So I think that bodes very well for our community. We've got an incoming general manager who is, you know, interested in getting involved with the community, getting to know folks. And actually, we're going to be thanking and saying goodbye to a general, outgoing general manager, Farhad Mansurian, next week at a reception down at their offices. So I'm also looking forward to being able to thank Farhad for all that he has done for Sonoma, Marin Counties, and SMART in his efforts so far, and we're looking forward to what Eddie Cummings is going to be doing for all of our communities in the future.
Thank you. Any other reports? Informational reports, and the informational report is that Todd and I will be at Coffee with the Mayor tomorrow, and we're going to have Supervisor Gore as my guest. And I want to suggest CTE Foundation to be our next guest for January. And then it's up to you on the Friends with Coffee with the Mayor.
What's on the agenda for Supervisor Gore tomorrow?
We're just chatting. You know that this is very informal. We're going to update and introduce our new mayor-elect, and we'll work on several other issues, whatever people want to ask. So if you need any suggestions, Vice Mayor Lance, always come to me. I have many friends. I know you do, too. Then, any legislative reports, letters of support or opposition, or anything?
No legislative reports, Mayor.
Okay. Attorney Sanchez?
Yes, Mayor. So, so real quickly, and I know that, well, no, Mayor Lance, did bring up the Joint City School Subcommittee meeting. I think it was, it was very informative. I did have one of my colleagues there at the meeting, and I know there was a point made, we're city attorneys, so we provide representation for the city and we provide risks to the city. However, anytime we're working with another agency, we also respect that other agency attorneys provide advice to their agencies. So we did, there was agreed to for us to work together. It's always nice to work together with other, with our colleagues and with other jurisdictions. We have since had one meeting already. I know we'll have a broader meeting, but very productive. I think we're pretty much saying a lot of the same things, but it's about how do we work together to move forward, given the laws that cities do have to comply with. So it's been very productive already. Also, wanted to let the council know, we are going, we are working on the, I know we've had a lot of issues come up, but we are working on the fireworks issue. I know the council did request us to come back with information regarding a potential measure, so we are working on that. That is something we'll be bringing back hopefully in January, as soon as possible. I do want to, Mayor Cruz, I want to say thank you for your leadership this year. It's been great to work with you as mayor. I know you bring a lot, you bring a lot of projects. You work on a lot of things, but it's inspiring, and I just want to say thank you. And our new mayor, just I would look forward to working with you closely and getting some of those projects that you have going as well.
Well, you know, I will continue to call on you because everything that I bring has a legal question. So we will continue on that. Any updates on current impacts to water supply, David?
Madam Mayor, real quick, just under city manager, just want to provide a quick update to council on the Planning Commission meeting last night. Planning Commission did review the update to the downtown plan, downtown zoning, downtown commercial zoning, as well as TOD. The commission did unanimously adopt the resolution recommending changes. So I know Kevin and our new city clerk will be working on bringing that forward to council for consideration. Likewise, Planning Commission also kicked off the start of our update of the general plan housing element so that we have a pretty aggressive schedule for adoption of the housing element with our, the start of our sixth cycle. So we'll be scheduling those meetings and public outreach very, very soon. So you'll hear more about that in the near future. In terms of the status update on current impacts to water supply, just want to share with the community that we continue to be subject to the curtailment order, you know, despite the rains that we, significant rains we received in October. We're seeing the, you know, our primary water supply in Lake Minassino increased very slowly, partly because of the impacts of the Potter Valley Project and some of the lack of infiltration, or lack of inflow because of the current system shutdown related to the power facilities there that have reduced inflows. We are on tap to get some additional rains this coming weekend and next week, so hopefully that will, that will continue to help bolster reservoir levels. But we still continue to be impacted by drought conditions, and there's still a call for conservation. We did, in the Cloverdale Connect, if you haven't seen it already, there is an article providing a critical drought update that also highlights some recommendations for our utility customers on how they might look at, you know, reducing water waste and conserving water in their households. So I just want to encourage those of you listening out there to take a look at the Cloverdale Connect. Hopefully, you got one in your inbox. And we'll be reporting our water use for November very shortly to the State Water Board as we are required to under the curtailment order and reporting requirements, you know, by this Friday.
Okay, thank you very much. And council direction on future agenda items? I already made my comment on Cherry Creek.
I may through the chair. Yeah, just to follow up on my earlier comments, I'd like to see a comprehensive organizational audit of cost allocations and positions in, as part of the process of the budget development, of budget development. So I think that that would be an important part of the process for us to revisit next year.
Anything else at this point? Before we go on, before we close, I want to make sure that the council members understand that when you review what, where you want to serve in committees and regional boards and so on, that Councilmember Bagby sits in ACTA Board, and it is required in order for her to be in the SMART Board. So those two have to go hand in hand, and I want you guys to remember that that is something that we should continue to have with Councilmember Bagby.
I think it's noted on here, but.
Okay.
No, I don't think it's noted on there.
And.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because it's a requirement.
I want to finish my year with zero waste and Russian River Water Shadow Association, given my engagement in that area. The other things are minor, but those are the three main things that we need to keep in mind as council. Okay, so anything else? Any comments?
Madam Chair, I just want to acknowledge again the work that you've done over the last year as mayor. But in addition to serving as mayor for our city council, you also served as the chair for the mayor and council members association. So I just want to acknowledge the tremendous amount of time and effort you put into the association and your fellow council members across Sonoma County. With the start of the new year, the chair role for the mayor council members association is going to the city of Cotati. So you'll see, you'll start to see email correspondence from the Cotati City Clerk, Lauren Burgess. So kind of keep an eye out because there's some pretty significant and important communications that you're going to receive from Miss Burgess about future meetings of the mayor and council members association, but also various positions that may come up in terms of advisory roles or other board appointments. And so just, just want to note to keep an eye out for those because you may have an interest in serving on one of those, on one of those, one of those roles that come up from time to time.
Yes, and I need to emphasize that in the short term that I have with the association, we reactivated the Ad-Hoc Committee to review the bylaws for the association, and we have Councilmember Bagby as the representative for Cloverdale. We also have Nisa Hinton, the vice mayor for Sebastopol, as well, as the third member, David? The third member is Fronter Park or Petaluma?
Petaluma.
Petaluma. And then we have the city manager from Cotati and city manager from, you guys were supposed to select.
He hasn't told us yet who, from, it's supposed to be a large city, city manager.
Yeah, we're going to have another meeting before I hand out the baton. And I have also been the chair of Zero Waste Sonoma for the county of Sonoma, working with ecology and other entities. And that would also rotate to Cotati as of the first of the year. We have canceled our December meeting, Zero Waste, and will restart in January. So at this moment, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, and welcome, Mrs. Garibaldi.